All right. Good evening, everyone. Called the meeting to order for the September 4th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting at 6:00. My name is Stephanie Slisch. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. I have to my right Doug Finn and to my left John Jeffress and then Lee Bell. Oh. Hello, everyone. Thanks for joining us. We just did, we'll redo this intro here. I called the meeting to order, the September 4th meeting at 6:00. My name is Stephanie Slisch. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. To my right, I have Doug Finn. To my immediate left, I have John Jeffress. And at the end, I have Lee Bell. I also have our Assistant Planner, Isabella Jaeger. And I have Lori Picard, our Administrative Assistant, as well. The first item on the agenda, as always, is public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who's here that's not on the agenda to bring forward new items, something to our attention to the planning board. So now is the time for those who are not on the agenda but here for a meeting to speak at public forum. I think everyone who is here virtually or in person is on the agenda. So we will close public forum and move to the first item on our agenda for formal discussion is related to Zephyr Behavioral Healthcare. They have questions regarding a possible application at 74 North Hatfield Road, parcel ID 211-42-0. I will ask them to unmute and introduce themselves in a moment. But it's, we're basically here today to talk about what their business, how to define their business and what they plan to use the parcel for. And that will determine what and if, any sort of steps they have to take, whether it's a site plan review, whether it's a special permit. This parcel is across the street from the old food bank, which is now Myers Produce. It's a house that kind of sit back in the woods. It's a residence. It's zoned rural residential. And so I will turn it over to the folks from Zephyr Behavioral Healthcare to introduce themselves, where they're from, and a little bit about what they're asking tonight.
Hello. Thank you for having us. My name is Lisa Ackley. I'm the founder and CEO of Jeffress.
And I'm Altona Kedz and Executive Director. So I guess I'll go ahead and start with the parcel itself and some of the thought process behind why we decided to make sense to include the Planning Board discussion. So that specific parcel was previously used by the state of Massachusetts and it was leased for the purposes of adults with disabilities. And it sounds like they actually stayed there overnight. So there was a sort of like a long-term approach to the care. And so we wanted to jump in and instead of assuming that it's allowed use, we want to make sure that we ask for permission first instead of, you know, asking for forgiveness. And so we have a lot of families and the kids' well-being's in mind. So we want to make sure they approach it properly. So our business is primarily focused on kids with disabilities who have been diagnosed with autism ages 2 to 6. And it is a one-to-one care, which means that every child has a professional who works with them. And our program runs from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. And most of the kids are there with us full day. None of them stay overnight. So the services themselves are, they might fall under different categories. We wanted to get some guidance on it because the funders that we work with are insurances, insurance companies. So from one hand, it might be categorized as healthcare. The other one, because we work solely with kids with autism, not sure if it falls under childcare. And also because it involves the educational component of creating programs for their own development, we want to make sure that it doesn't get misinterpreted as educational component because we're not operated or regulated by the educational system in the state of Massachusetts.
Right. So thank you for that introduct, for that. Because just for some clarity around how that then applies to our zoning, is that a childcare center is allowed by right in a rural residential zone? And would not, you would not need to come before the Planning Board at all? Just need to follow that? Is there any regulation from the state for this facility? Because I know that childcare centers do, are regulated by the state. Just have questions on that.
We don't have state regulation.
Okay. The next, so that's with childcare centers. If you were to call it a...
Healthcare.
Healthcare education. If you were to call it healthcare education, then that would be, or if you were called education, then that would be considered a site plan review. And if you called it medical, that would be a special permit, I believe, right? With site plan approval, yeah. Although I was trying to look at what, which part of the table of use were you looking at for the medical? Just so I can, healthcare, I think, was the category that it fell under, if that pops up.
They're saying they don't want to file.
Any healthcare, professional.
A professional medical business service? That is not allowed in a rural residential zone.
He said they don't employ any medical professionals.
Okay, that's good. Right.
Education or childcare?
Right. Because it seems like it would base, and also based on its previous use, which I don't believe anyone came, was there any sort of thing on file for that beforehand? Yeah. And nobody came before us before when it was conceivably an adult.
Yeah, I think it was, was it Riverside in there? I'm not, I'm not sure what the name.
It was least. Someone from the state, it was the state was, it was like an adult. Kind of daycare type of program.
I think the other thing to consider is it's 2 to 6-year-olds, he said. So I mean, is that, is that sub the level where it would be education? I guess would be my question.
Well, I was just going to ask the question because the folks here have already said that they're not under any kind of regulatory authority by the state Department of Education. And it's 2 to 6-year-olds. So nothing that you do within your programs, I'm speaking directly to you folks now, nothing you do within your programs takes the place of a formal educational process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I would suggest this could very well fall under simply childcare center.
Yep. Specialized childcare center.
Specialized childcare center, certainly, but childcare center.
Allowed by right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that and appreciate.
I strongly agree with that.
Yeah. There we are.
Move to, move to A and R or keep on going about it.
Not really A and R, but it's more, they can just go ahead making sure that they register a business and that kind of thing with the town. But they would not need to go forward with the Planning Board, at least at this time.
Just one clarifying question. It's not really, doesn't factor one way or the other. When you have your facility up and running, when things are working, do you have any kind of inspections or reviews? Is there any kind of folks who come in to make sure that the programs you're doing are safe? And, and that sort of thing?
We don't have folks that come physically onsite, but we have reviews from the insurance companies every six months where we present data on the child's progress. And they make sure that what we're offering is still considered medically necessary.
Okay. Good luck.
Yep. Thank you for coming. I appreciate you being proactive in this. And yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Moving along to the second item on our agenda is something that came in yesterday, right, Lori? So we apologize for the last minute. But we are compelled to act within 21 days. And so this is why we are talking about this now, tonight. This is related to 224 and 228 Straits Road, map ID 206-91.2-0 and 206-84-0. And we have applicant for this A and R here tonight. If you don't mind just coming and sitting in front of these, where the microphone is, and introducing yourself and just sharing, yep, what the proposed proposal is between the lot lines for 224 and 228. And yeah, thank you.
You want me to explain what I want?
Yeah, just introduce yourself.
Yeah, James Fuzik, and this is my wife, Betsy Fuzik. We live at 224 Straits Road. And I want to build a garage extension on the north side of the house. And everything is on my property, but I don't have the 15-foot leeway. So the neighbor has offered to sell me a jog, keep his frontage, but sell me the jog around my proposed building. I had surveyors from Hadley Eaton lay it all out. And that's what it's in front of you now. I got a lawyer agreement here that Phil hasn't signed. But you know, me and him have a verbal agreement. But I tried to pay him the other day and he says, well, you don't need to pay me until the town says okay. Therefore, that's just a waste of time. So, and then the carpenter gave you the small papers of the proposed mudroom-garage extension from J.D. Ross. And that's the plan of attack. Just waiting on the permission to buy the property. And before I buy it, you got to make sure the plan's going to fly. And that's all.
Yeah, this is.
Nothing too fancy.
Yeah, so it's essentially you're just buying enough to allow for the 15-foot Zephyr requirement.
Yeah, I'm buying, I have a foot and a half from the plan. I'm buying 16 feet. Therefore, you got a one-foot overhang that everybody forgets about. And therefore, you got your 15 feet.
Right.
Because it goes by the overhang, not the concrete.
Yeah, this seems pretty cut and dry to us, right? Or me, at least to me. I don't want to speak for the rest of the world.
Leaving a lot that's perfectly conformant.
Well, it's a lot, 228 is not conforming because it doesn't have the frontage. But the fact that they're not touching the frontage and just doing that.
It doesn't make it any less.
Right. If they were to take it from the frontage and go all the way, then that would be.
And this lot line adjustment does not create any new non-conformities.
Correct.
That being said, an A and R is, doesn't even have to get down to that level. Do both lots continue to have access across their own frontage? Yes. Do both lots continue to have appropriate area? Yes. It requires an endorsement.
You're perfectly good with us.
Yeah, the only thing to acknowledge also with this is that 228 is owned business while the other part is zoned residential. But I don't think that there'll be a business operating on 16 feet of undeveloped, or undeveloped.
You're, we signed this and this becomes a plan that you can record.
Yeah, then I got to bring it to my lawyer and the registry of deeds.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Do not record it until you actually transact the sale of the land? If you do, you will have committed fraud. Don't do that, okay? Yeah, you have to buy the land, then they'll record the plan.
All right, well, I can do that. Now it's a matter of getting ahold of Phil because he's hard to chase down.
I'll make a motion that we endorse the plan as not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second that.
Second, third.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. We can sign this right now and give you your documents now. That works.
Okay.
Kick the mask, it's a good one. That's a good one. You got a Sharpie?
You're going to need a Sharpie for the, for that.
We're signing both of them.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for providing with a easy-to-approved plan.
I know, this has been the most straightforward A and R in a while.
Bring us something tricky next time. This is easy. This one was easy. No problem.
That's what I'm trying to aim for.
Good relations with the neighbors, huh?
Oh, yeah. He put a roof on my highway garage and a roof on my mother's house. And he's a super nice guy, period. Regardless.
I saw him up on the roof of the long-term care facility there on the end of Hatfield Street.
Where's that?
Used to be a hospital, I don't know, was it? On the end of Hatfield Street there.
Oh, here in town?
No, like North Hampton.
North Hampton.
Yeah, he's, he's all over the place.
You just have to make sure you sign.
He's doing a church over, I think it was on Holly Street. Took the cupillo off the church. It was from the 1800s, all rotted. And they, the church paid him to rebuild the whole thing, lead facing and copper and tin work. And I don't even want to know what that is.
And it's back, it's back on Holly Street? It's back on that church on Holly Street now?
As far as I know, it was there, the original is in the back on blocks. And his was made and shipped. It's beautiful work. There's all the architectural stuff. I think it was on Holly Street.
You're official.
All right, yeah, you can come grab these. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to see you both.
How many did you need signed? Just three of them.
We keep the top copy, okay.
There's, there's one more in here. I'll have you sign these.
And then the small papers, you need all those, right?
I think we're, yeah. Thank you.
Unless you need, unless you want another loose copy. Unless you want another loose copy?
No, no, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is related to the comprehensive plan. Remember last month I was like, oh, we're going to get a presentation tonight? Turns out, we are not. It's getting delayed one more month because we, the reason being because of, basically in short, the select board schedule. They've been jam-packed. It looks like there's going to be a special town meeting. So they were preparing for that. And so they've asked to push this till October. So they're going to get presented at, it looks like the October, their October 1st meeting, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, Lori. And so then will be presented at October 2nd. And so then we can vote to approve it then. If we want more time to read it or think about it, we could do it in November. But if the presentation will officially be October 2nd. So you all can breathe a sigh of relief if you didn't get a chance to read all 300-plus pages. Who is, maybe, who is presenting? Is that PVPC? No, it's actually going to be members of the Pioneer Valley, or a comprehensive plan committee. I think our co-chairs. And then there's going to be an invitation to the rest of the committee to present. It's going to be basically about like how this came to be, to explain like the number of people who participated in this, and then top line. So we're not going to get like the full scope of everything. It's going to be like very top line because how can you present on 300 pages in like 20 minutes?
It's only handfuls of changes, though. It's not, you know, change on all 300 pages.
Kind of. There's a lot of recommend, I think that the action plan, I forget how many pages the action plan is, like 80 maybe? 120? 120. Those are the ones you should actually probably read. If you want more context, read all 300. More graphs. Back to school.
Back to school.
What I wanted to ask about is the 40B law that's now in effect in January, right? The anti-snob law that looks like it right, overwrites a lot of our ADU language?
Oh, perfect timing. That's on the next item on the agenda, which is related, if we're done talking about the comprehensive plan, basically, I will re-up that email to make sure you have all the resources you need at your fingertips.
Yeah, apparently I'm going to have to get a Google account. Yeah, my kids will help me.
You also could, maybe Lori could print the action plan out.
I started printing it, worked, it was like, got to about 150 pages.
It's a lot.
Roughly speaking, isn't it, it's usually the first chapter that's sort of the nuts and bolts of it in the action plan. I mean, and that'll have the chart of what's going to be done and when.
Action plan.
So, yeah, stick with that.
Side is that single side.
Graphs and charts and everything else that's.
The supporting information, the process, speaking to how they came up with the information.
And the action plan is like about, like it has, it's divided into seven themes that help like organize what it's supposed to mean and how to understand it more. Yeah. And almost all the themes really kind of all intersect with planning board stuff. Right. Because it's all stuff we should be thinking about. And I imagine the presentation is probably going to be structured via theme that way, too. Yeah, that would make sense. And they're going to present the same thing to the select board as they, as they present to us. Or very similar. So the idea is the public has an opportunity to hear it, whether they watch a select board meeting or our meeting. Yeah.
Got you.
Do you want to talk about the, like prioritizing these deliverables today? Or we're just thinking about that?
The other pieces in, of all the resources I shared with you, there's also some deliverables that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the ones that we prioritized, said that we wanted them to prioritize.
They came back with some more refinements on that.
And they came back with a lot of, with all of them that we have to review. And from that, we could prioritize bringing some or any of those to town meeting if we want or pursuing them further. So yeah, what did you want to talk about?
Oh, I was just curious. It's like, so I have something printed out, your two deliverables, is that, like some of these have been done already? And then the remaining ones, I can tell just by certain dates, like, oh, this was due February of 2024. But so then the remaining ones are for PVPC to do with their remaining hours? Is that right? And we're supposed to choose what our priorities are?
And they already did that. And those are the ones that are the deliverables in that folder.
In that folder. Okay. Great.
Yep. Cool. So.
This way.
And thinking about that and what we want to prioritize as a board is also, because there's some, they also prioritize them by, there's a, there's a helpful table that I don't know if it's in the action plan or not, and I don't remember where they placed it. But there's like a table that shows you if it's a long-term thing, how long it'll take. If it's like, this is a high priority and it's going to take a long time. This is a medium priority, it'll take a long time, you know, type of, it helps you kind of think like, oh, if it's a high priority and it's going to take a long time, we should probably start this now. Versus maybe, and then look at low-hanging fruit also, like there's, we have to think about like the strategy around what we conceivably do and, yeah. And timing it out. So thankful that we have an assistant planner to help with some of this. Just in time. Right. Thank you. Like I said, I'll re-up the email to y'all. And if there's a possibility, Lori, I don't know, like, is it, could we ask for cop, like, would it be hard to have a hard copy for?
I will get, I will get them through the creating a Google account hurdle.
Yeah, thanks.
I recommend that they're printed in color annoyingly because so many of these things are color-reliant.
Of course.
Maps and charts that don't make any sense.
Yeah, and the, and the track changes, too. The red text on the track changes helps so much.
Yeah, exactly.
If you, if you need a copy, just let me know.
Maybe that's something the PVPC can do with their remaining time is print some copies for us?
It is.
We actually have, we actually have a line item. I think it's like 1,100 bucks that we were going to be using for printing to have some bound copies that will end up, you know, probably go to the library here, you know? And there's also, deliverables also like a poster. And so we want to print copies of that poster that will hopefully like might hang on the wall here to remind us and bring us all back to our key themes. And there's little checkboxes, like when we get things done, we can like check them off of the poster. So.
Nice. Big thermometer on the front of the town hall?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
You just cut the corner off when that part's done.
Every year to 2040. So there's some conversations about getting some of them printed. And there's some budget, budget left to do that. But it's also like surprisingly very expensive to do that. But not if you just want plain old copy or paper from the town hall. Okay. So be prepared for a presentation next month. And I better not say the same thing again next month. Better actually be prepared.
We are really geared up for it.
I mean.
Now, if they're doing select board and then we're the next day, so they will have refined their act. It will be perfect.
There should be no holes.
Love it.
Perhaps we could pregame the select.
We should probably go to the first night.
I was going to go to the select board together, the opening night field.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the energy.
Exactly.
Right? Better performance.
All right. Moving on to the other board discussion item, related to our accessory dwelling unit bylaw that we passed at town meeting.
All this work we did.
All this work, all this work we did to update it. The big difference that we added was to allow for detached dwelling units because our previous bylaw only allowed for attached. And then Governor Moore Healy came through, I don't know, a month ago? Month and a half ago? Month and a half ago. And with her updated housing law, Act, whatever, and a piece of that allowed accessory dwelling units by right.
Up to 900, just like us, right?
Yeah. And so it ends up, there's pieces of our updated ADU bylaw that are now, well, will be.
January, right?
Yeah, it comes into effect on February 5th, the state law, which will then trump, for lack of a better word, supersede.
Supersede, a better word.
I can't say that word anymore without thinking that. But it will supersede what we passed this past May. So in order for us to stay on top of things, we will need to update the ADU bylaw at our next town meeting without really substantial changes. It's basically just going to say, to bring it up to code with the state law that was implemented. And so Doug has graciously dug in.
Is it necessary that we revise?
Because this, the state law trumps us.
Does it, Doug? Do we have to revise it or can we just remove it altogether?
Or can we?
Remove it altogether?
If you remove it altogether, then.
Or just change it to a codicil referred to.
Well, let me ask a question. Is the Hatfield zoning bylaw exclusionary or inclusionary? In other words, if something is not actively permitted, is it denied? If you don't mention bowling alleys in your zoning bylaws being a permitted thing, can somebody building, build a bowling bylaw at all? What's that?
No bowling is.
No bowling.
Up till this point.
You know what bowling alleys are caused?
Yeah. Rock and roll.
Come with a T that rhymes with B that stands for bowling.
That's a good question.
The thing is, I think, I think we want some sort of regulation in place because somebody is going to want to put an ADU on a non-conforming lot or a substandard lot, or they're going to propose it where there's already an existing non-conformity on the lot, whether the house is too close to the driveway or the road or something. And you want to have some bumpers in place.
Does the update change the size of the lot? I think it does.
The.
It's smaller than ours.
We say ours because we have, we have non-conforming lots.
No, no, I'm saying what we said. We're saying .56 of an acre or something. You got to be .56 or something of an acre, 30,000, whatever it's.
We listed, I think, as 60,000, which is higher than minimum conforming size.
It says, in your most recent changes, you've struck the, on a lot of, on a lot of less than 60,000 square feet and 30,000 square feet. And now it just says an ADU shall be permitted if the planning board determines that. And then there's all these.
That's on a conforming lot, that the lot is conforming, that there's no other non-conformities, that there's water and wastewater available, that there's room for at least one parking space.
Access without walking up.
You know, and, and you have, and you, and we're retaining some control by saying the ADU can't extend closer to the road than the existing dwelling. In other words, you can't put it in your front yard. It has to be clearly subservient to the main dwelling on the lot.
There's a difference between the new state law, lot size and our lot size.
Right. Yeah.
So we got to, that's something we got to capture.
And we can impose reasonable conditions, provided that we're not outright banning it.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So it's best to revise rather than just say, see above.
The one thing it's frustrating for a lot of folks is the fact that the state law removes ownership requirements. I personally have a problem with a corporation owning a residential house. I don't care if it's an ADU or a main dwelling. I have a real problem with that. And I think that's a source of a lot of the housing problem in the economy.
Air, B, crash that's going on right now.
Exactly. So, but that's another argument, unfortunately. That's another conversation.
Well, yeah, and the issue with, if it doesn't, if one of the, one of the, either the ADU or the main parcel doesn't have to be owner occupied, that then also creates more options, whether it's a corporation or not, more for rent, more rentals. And we have.
We're trying to.
We're trying to create more opportunities for homeownership We're trying to create more opportunities for homeownership because we've kind of, according to the comprehensive plan, we're about a sixty forty split, sixty percent homeownership, forty percent rentals, with rentals going up.
Yep.
And once you hit a certain point.
Really?
You're really gonna like end up, it's, it's not good for, you know, for people getting involved in community for a lot of reasons, for get, whether that means getting involved in town, in town boards, whether it's sending kids to schools, and.
Essentially the roots of the community.
Correct. And, you know, we want to create opportunities where people can build their equity and stuff, and through a homeownership. I mean, that's something from, that I would like to see us try to help with the, as we can do with planning, with the planning board and through zoning, so. So, yeah, I'm not a huge fan of that, removing that either. But we must do what the Commonwealth tells us.
Work within the parameters.
So, yeah, Doug, I took a first stab at this, it's something that we're gonna inevitably have to bring to town meeting, so I think may, it's something that maybe we could talk through the proposed changes and things at the next meeting, does that make sense? Take a look at that.
If you need any help, Doug, you know, I mean, it's not like, it's too much of a, not much of a heavy lift, it's like, hey, this is what we have to do here. The argument at town meeting is gonna be simple.
Right.
We made this change, it's been superseded, and now we have to come up to code.
Yep.
People just voted through because they already helped us on the last one.
And I think this, is there a zone in Hatfield where the minimum lot size is higher than sixty thousand square feet?
No, I think I'll, I think, no.
It's.
She's got the table right here, she's got it bookmarked.
Or resident, I should say, residential zone.
Somewhere in here, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll have to find out where it is actually, I'm gonna. It's a table again somewhere up here. Oh, it's business zone, if we're looking at residential. Oh, forty-five thousand square feet.
Minimum lot size?
Yep.
Acres, forty-four, five, sixty?
No, I just did this, it's, I'm all off here.
Right, an acre is forty-four thousand five hundred sixty square feet?
I don't know.
We'll get there.
You're the guy I would ask that question, Doug, so.
Because, yeah, I was, I've always been told that it's, the minimum lot size is around an acre.
Yeah.
So that is, it scans.
Yeah, forty-three, five, sixty.
Forty-three, five, sixty, so if it's forty-five thousand slightly over acre, yeah, that's fine.
But our ADU is thirty K, right?
The way the bylaw is written right now, if you have sixty thousand square feet or more, an ADU could be built by right. Less than sixty but more than thirty, it would require a special permit, or at least a site plan review, less than thirty, not allowed.
Gotcha.
The revision says that if your lot is conforming, an ADU is allowed by right, which complies with the state law. If your lot is not conforming, it requires a special permit. And I think we, I think.
So conforming with us is forty.
Forty-five thousand square feet and you need two hundred feet of frontage.
It winds up being reduced.
That's me standing, you gotta have that more than acre to build a house in Hatfield, these days, okay, so I'm not conforming. So I'm not conforming, Bridge, nobody on Bridge Street's conforming, my side of Bridge Street.
Well, part of your side of Bridge Street, yes. Any, basically, any houses built, I think that was implemented, I was trying to figure out the history of when that was implemented, and it was sometime in the eighties. So basically, most of the houses, honestly.
Fifty-seven, sixty.
At least in downtown Hatfield proper, do not meet, are not conforming.
Right.
So new houses are tougher to build than my house.
Well, and yeah, if a lot is too small, and somebody's saying, oh, I want to build a whole new dwelling here, there's a lot of things to look at. But I'll use my property as an example, I have nearly three acres, but I only have a hundred and seventy feet of frontage, the way the lot's been for, you know, a hundred years. My lot technically would not qualify for an ADU without special permit.
You need a special permit.
Review, yeah.
Yeah.
Because of that, even though I have plenty of room and I have town water and sewer and plenty of space to put the, the structure, you know, I would still need a special permit.
Which has been a continual problem in this town, the frontage versus the backland.
First versus the backland, right, right.
Flag lots, whatever.
And I think it's appropriate, you know, if I wanted to do something, it would be appropriate for me to make sure my neighbors were okay with it. Because it's a long, narrow lot, and fair enough, no problem. But, you know, if you've got somebody with a smaller, square-ish lot in the downtown, and they were trying to stuff a, a whole structure on their tiny little back porch or something, that doesn't make sense.
Right, and you say downtown, and I don't want to like alarm people, because people love the charming, historic, beautiful downtown, but like, you know, you live on Bridge Street, I live on Straits Road, you know, places where there was a bunch of ranches put in in the seventies.
On three-quarter acre lots or whatever it happens to be.
Exactly, exactly.
Could be somewhere, no big deal, you want to put a little, you know, six hundred square foot granny-in-law cottage out back, great, no problem.
Or it's attached and it's just like an addition that would be.
Yeah, convert the garage to a second dwelling, you know, like, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so those would be allowed, no matter your lot size, but if it's not conforming, you have to come to get a special permit. You would have to come to us, and butters would then be notified when they wouldn't necessarily have to be notified if it's a larger structure by right.
Yeah, and that's something we, we want to make sure the butters are getting notified, that the neighborhood is aware, no, no surprises.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
Especially on smaller lots, right. So that's, those are the main changes that would be happening, and we, there's not really any debate, it just has to be.
There it is, right, it's there, nothing you can do.
And so Doug put some red, marked up the copy of what we already, what we just passed, and so if you ever want to take a look at that.
Please look, I may have made mistakes, there were a couple of things, changes that I recommended that where it was literally, you know, number J said the same thing that number B said. You know, it's just restated or different, so I said, oh, forget it, we don't need it.
We covered this.
We covered this already, right.
Yeah, I've just seen the, like, the synopsis of the changes to the forty B, whatever, I haven't read CMR, so I gotta get it.
Yep, so that's also homework, we'll have a lot of homework between this one and the next one. Who is in session? September fourth. With that, is there any further discussion on the ADU bylaw change?
Will table that till our next meeting?
Yep.
Great.
Um, last piece of our agenda is approving our minutes from the August seventh meeting, which those are right here. Have we had, had an update or heard anything else from Zigma?
They, uh, wrote.
Yep, we followed up with them, gave them everything that they needed, and we should probably just check back in with them in a month or two, if you answer, have a post about it.
Yeah, we're way more flexible than, hey, can you expand this road type of question, that is a difficult problem.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented? I just hope one time to read it.
I read them and they looked fine.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? The minutes from August seventh are approved as is. Um, our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, October second, we always meet the first Wednesday of the month. Um, and so we will see you all then for a presentation from the comprehensive plan and a continued conversation about changes to our ADU bylaw. Which hopefully we can check that off and then move on to the next thing that we'll probably bring to town meeting. Which will be related to comprehensive plan stuff.
Before we close things out, a quick question, I don't know who might have information on this, regarding the comprehensive plan, for anybody who's read through it, do you believe that the proposals, the recommendations, the strategies, the, you know, the goals and sort of thing outlined by the plan align with public input, public comments, things that people in town have said? And that it's not a planner gone amok at the PVPC?
Yeah, let me, how do I answer that? We had, I think like, we had a really good survey response when we had the townwide survey, like three hundred, I think, responses. And then we had an in-person event at Black Birch Vineyard, which I forget how many people were there to that, somewhere between fifty and a hundred people came through and gave feedback to that. Um, I will say that there's definitely a climate-heavy focus, and I, that's definitely because it's funded by the MVP Act, the MVP Grant. And so I'd say that might be a little bit more of a focus than what was stated by the public. But I also, and I also think that they are helpful to have, for us to think, to have that thinking in the back of our minds when we are making decisions and recommendations, because we, you know, they had, part of the grant had, you know, these engineers come and say like, there's updated water flows, and this is what the Connecticut River breaches, for example, this is what it's gonna look like, it's not gonna be this high like it's been, it's gonna be this high. And so, we do have to anticipate and think about that, those types of things related to our zoning maps. So, I think, does that answer, I think that answers your question in that, it's probably a little more climate-focused than it would have been if it wasn't MVP.
And, and that's fine so long as the, again, the recommendations that are being presented or proposed align with what local folks expect and encourage or have advocated for.
Yep.
Fair enough, thanks.
Yep.
That's well thought.
Yep, and the committee was made up of, you know, folks from all different committees in town and some at-large members that have gotten involved, you know, this is maybe their first time volunteering at something like this, which is helpful.
I haven't gotten deep into the recommendations yet, but I, I did see that in the action plan, they talk about how farmers at least are expressing concerns about flooding. So it's like, at least the front end, like, the concerns are expressed by people in town, I don't know whether the solutions that they offer.
Yep.
Yeah, and that was a big thing is that, and a lot of the rec, not a lot, but some of the recommendations are pulled from previous, the previous master plan. And then there was like a follow-up to the master plan, maybe like less than ten years later, that things that didn't get done, that they pulled some of those and brought them, continued them on because it made sense, so there's that too. And, you know, the big thing is everyone loves our rural character and our farms, and so there's also a big focus. Thanks for bringing that up on the farms and how we, how a municipality can help support farms and farmers. Which is gonna be one of the first, the second in the Commonwealth to have its own chapter dedicated to farming, which is, you know, I think exciting, but.
Yeah.
Well, surprising, honestly.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, more, more next month, that was a nice, nice teaser. So yes, October second. And for the most part, it's, you know, we're not gonna be like redlining and marking up this comprehensive plan, it's, you know, should have gone through its many, you know, it's gone through revisions and things like that, maybe there'll be little things here or there, but for the, it's, you know, we shouldn't be saying, we disagree with this because we should be respectful of the process that happened in order to get to us.
Fair enough, but the plan doesn't establish or create a priority, priority for the various actions that could be taken?
It does prioritize stuff, what do you know, there's a lot of high priority things, so it's.
And everything is high priority, nothing is high priority.
Right, and so it's kind of us sussing out what we want to prioritize and do. Yeah.
There's easy, achievable, moving on to more difficult, harder to achieve, and leave the, oh my God, we can't get that done.
Yeah, very.
Yeah, there's some that are like, it's not gonna be us, we're gonna need like the whole town administration on board for some of these things. Which no one's gonna want to touch, but arguably those are the ones that are most, have the most impact on the town, for better, you know, or for worse, but it's supposed to be for better. So. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You can. I moved you to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, all favor?
Aye.
Alright, meeting of the September fourth, planning board meeting is adjourned at six forty-three.